She watches every meeting, seriously. Now she's gonna be mad.
Why? You said hi to your mom. Why is that a bad thing?
I don't know. We can pray now.
All right. Call the meeting to order those that care to please stand for an opening prayer and pledge of allegiance. Mr. Cameron, would you lead us in prayer?
Yes, let us pray. Tell me, Father, we just thank you for this day and thank you for all that you do for us. Lord, tonight, we just pray, God, for our students and the school administrators and all the teachers that have gone back to school. And we're just be with them during this school year for safety and help them in their education and their studies and just protection and just give the teachers wisdom. And we just ask, Lord, that you would guide and direct us as a community. Just continue to show your favor upon us. Give us wisdom and direction in all that we do and all that we say, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening. Thank you for being here tonight. I feel like it's been a minute since we've been here, so we're gonna try to figure out if we can remember how to do this. I'm gonna start out with citizen participation. I'd like to open it up for citizen participation. Anyone wishing to speak to something not on the agenda, please approach the podium, state your name and your address, and you will be given three minutes to give us your thoughts.
Hello.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Chris Brown, 7534 West US Highway 60, number 175.
Welcome, Mr. Brown.
Thank you. More than 31 million acres of US agricultural land has been lost to urban expansion since 1982. Our city has not been spared from this trend. While I understand progress, I'm torn between it and the loss of habitat for our pollinator. $3 million. Put that bouncer on your head while I talk to you. Hello. I'm the creator of the Republic Missouri Butterfly Group and the Republic Butterfly Preserve. Our group, with assistance from the Parks Department, has created five pollinator gardens in our city parks. We maintain them, partnering with Ruting Republic to create neighbor engagement. I'd like to share some fascinating information before we get back to the $3 million topic. Missouri is home to 450 species of bees compared to 4,000 total in North America. You have 150 species of butterflies compared to 442 in Texas. Yes, climate is a factor, the difference of recorded species. The major factor is loss of habitats and the use of pesticides. A single blueberry bee can visit 50,000 flowers in a short lifetime, resulting in 6,000 new blueberries. I'm sharing this information with you because each one of you today, right now, could make a difference. I'm asking for you to consider a series of changes. Number one, all new businesses must plant at least 50% native pollinator-friendly plants in their landscape. Number two, all existing businesses must plant at least 50% native pollinator plants in their landscape within one year of introduction. Number three, city and business commit to pesticides, no pesticide use near plants. Number four, city proclaim June 19th through the 25th as Pollinator Week, committing to community education and tolerance. Number five, and finally, city erect signs declaring Republic as a pollinator-friendly city. Now, what's in it for the city? Not all changes are tracked on spreadsheet. You all go shopping and most likely see the high prices. According to the Cornell University, US residents benefit annually $3 billion from pollinating infant. You've taken care of us for years. Now it's time to take care of them. One business who has taken the initiative to go native pollinator plant is McLean in our own city. These perennial plants will ultimately save our pollinator partners money in landscaping costs. Who's willing to help save our pollinators?
Mr. Brown, if you could wrap it up? Thank you, sir. That was perfect timing.
That timed it. Four times that timed it.
You did perfect. Well done. I made some notes up here. We're gonna be following up. Thank you. Ms. Moonieham. Good evening. You can lower that down if you want. Yeah, absolutely.
I'm getting over a cold, so it's... My voice is not quite as... And I'm gonna read mine so I can get in the three minutes.
Thank you, ma'am.
And I appreciate the invitation back.
Absolutely.
I'm Terri Moonieham. I reside at 1733 East Charles in Republic. But tonight, I'm representing the Historical Society, our 135 members, as I am the current president. And this is regarding the property that the city owns at 221 North Main. I appreciated the opportunity to meet with Jordan Furness and Karen Haynes from the Builds Department on Tuesday, July 25th, along with Bill Roberts, and a member of our Historical Society Board. We were given a packet of information containing a building assessment by Miller Engineering of the City Works Building located at 221 North Main Avenue that was dated November 20th, 2018, and a copy of the resolution of the City Council approving the demolition of the current Public Works Building located at 221 North Main Avenue, signed by Mayor Matt Russell, dated July 19th, 2022. According to the minutes of the meeting, this was a unanimous decision. We were told by Karen that demolition could take place as early as this fall, but nothing has been scheduled as of yet. The Historical Society's mission is to research, collect, and preserve the history of Republic and the surrounding areas. Republic's Main Street Historical Business District is now a small one with several empty spaces where buildings once stood. There have been business owners on Main Street for 150 years, and 221 North Main Avenue is a cornerstone of this area. The current Main Street business owners are no different than the ones of the past, shop owners depending on traffic and public awareness. We asked the City Council to delay demolition for at least six months to give the Historical Society time to look into financing and/or grants to save 221 North Main from demolition and preserve what we have remaining in Republic's Historical Business District. This action also allows our organization the opportunity to conduct our own feasibility study for museum use. We are out of space at our current location. This would allow us a much larger space and have the capacity to offer expanded displays, host students for learning opportunities, and create an inviting atmosphere for visitors and much more. We feel our proposal will benefit the city by saving the city the cost of demolition, unnecessary trash to our landfills, and be more environmentally responsible. We support the economic expansion of Republic and feel strongly that growth does not have to diminish our historical heritage. Our request includes the donation of the property at 221 North Main to the Republic Historical Society. We thank you for your consideration of our request. And I do have also pictures of the building from 1900, 1960s, and current, and I made copies.
Thank you.
If everyone would...
That was exactly...
Yep. Same thing.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Any other citizens wishing to speak to something not on the agenda? Seeing none, I'm gonna close citizen participation. Move on to consent agenda. There are six items on the consent agenda. I need a motion and a second for the approval of said consent agenda.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to Boards, Commissions, and Committees' schedule. We have a City Council meeting next Tuesday, August 29th, 2023. That has to happen.
It has to happen.
It has to happen. City Council on September 5th is going to be canceled because we're gonna have back-to-back meetings. Board of Adjustments meeting canceled on September 7th. Planning and zoning meeting, September 11th, 2023, and another City Council on September 19th. If there's... That's the Boards, Commissions, and Committees' schedules. I wanna give a preview. This is a lengthy agenda, and item number 16, this is 23-30, is going to be tabled. So if there's anybody here on item 16 wanting to speak, I don't want you to have to wait until we reach that point. So please know that if you're here to speak on it, it's gonna be tabled. It'll come up in the... September 19th. Megan wrote it down for me right here. So that's what's gonna happen with that, just in case you were here to speak on it. Moving on to old business and tabled items. Item number seven on our agenda. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 23-21 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries five to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental cooperative agreement with Green County, Missouri, for road striping services.
Thank you, ma'am. Any updates from staff? Any questions, comments, discussions, counsel? Seeing none, I would now entertain a motion and a second for final passage of Bill 23-21.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We will now take a roll call vote on our computers.
Mine's being goofy.
Define goofy.
Me.
Okay. So really, it's your being goofy.
There we go.
Ordinance carries five to zero. Moving on to item number eight on our agenda. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 23-22 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries five to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council approving the final plat of the Iron Green Plan Development District Phase 1.
Thank you, ma'am. Any updates from counsel?
No.
Or from staff. You knew what I meant. Thank you. We're right there. Any questions, discussions, or comments from counsel on this issue? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second for final passage of Bill 23-22.
Motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. We will now take a roll call vote on our computers. That's abstaining. Sorry, it took me a second to see that. All right. Megan, do we need five for this?
Yes.
Yep.
Looks like yes, unless it's a... Yes.
Because we are down members and Councilmember Gurke is abstaining, ordinance does not pass at this time. Moving on to item number nine on our agenda. This is Bill 23-23. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of that bill, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries five to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council approving execution of a developer agreement with Turner Residential Holdings LLC for the continued development of the Oak Hills Phase 3 residential subdivision.
Thank you, ma'am. Any updates from staff? Any questions, discussions, or comments from counsel? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 23-23, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We will now take a roll call vote. Cool. Ordinance passes five to zero. Before we move on to item number 10, Mr. Cameron tells me that I did something wrong.
No, it's not. Mr. Mayor, thank you. I just need to get a clarification on the last vote. So it failed on the Iron Green District, so I need to know from legal counsel. Do they have to go through... That's not... I don't believe they can just go back to the next meeting that we have. Is that correct? I mean, it fails. So I think... I don't think it's a matter that it can... I think there's a... Some level, we're gonna have to address that because it's the final plat of something that has already been approved, so we're gonna have to get that clarified. And I think we may have to clarify how that needs to be resolved because he has to get the final plat so he can occupy the building. But does that mean that it has to wait six months before it can come back? There are some provisions in our code, so I just... I would just like to make sure that we do not let that moment go by without staff of our legal counsel or Chris addressing that.
I'm not sure that he needs it to occupy the building. The buildings that were permitted already are because the zoning was correct for the buildings in that present area. Now, to go on forward with the projects, we would be looking at...
So just to clarify, because the Iron Green District, so the commercial element of that retail function is still... He can issue a CFO, or they can issue a CFO, or certificate of occupancy for those that... But when it comes to the remaining pieces of building, the apartments and the storage behind it, it would delay those buildings? Okay, we're good. We're good to go, yeah.
All right, item number 10 on our agenda. This is 23-24. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 23-24, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries five to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council approving amendment of the zoning classification of approximately four acres of real property located at 1192 South State Highway MM from Agricultural AG to heavy industrial M2.
Thank you, ma'am. Any updates from staff?
No.
Any questions, comments, or discussion from counsel? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second for final passage of Bill 23-24, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We will now take a roll call vote on our computers. Ordinance passes by a vote of five to zero. Moving on to item number 11, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 23-25 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries five to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council approving amendment of the zoning classification of approximately 1.1 acres of real property located at 2314, 2318, 2326, and 2330 East Timber Oak Street from the 12 Stones Plan Development District, PDD, to Two Family Residential, R2.
Thank you, ma'am. Any updates from staff?
No.
Any questions, comments, or discussion from counsel? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 23-25.
Motion.
Second.
Laura, did you get that?
I'm good.
Perfect. We have a motion and a second. We will now take a roll call vote on our computers. Ordinance passes by a vote of five to zero. Moving on to item number 12, this is 23-26. Have I been saying 22 the whole time? I haven't, have I? I've been saying 23, right? All right. 23-26. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of 23-26 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion. Motion carries five to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council authorizing the city administrator to execute an agreement with the city of Springfield, Missouri for the purchase of programming code to design an interface for transferring information from the Republic Police Department to the Prosecuting Attorney Management System.
Updates from staff?
None.
Questions, comments, or discussions from counsel? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 23-26, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We will take a roll call vote. Ordinance carries by a vote of five to zero. Moving on to new business, specifically first reading of ordinances. Item number 13 on our agenda. I would entertain a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 23-27 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries by a vote of five to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council approving execution of a developer agreement with Schuler Ridge LLC for development of the Phase 4 of the Lakes of Schuler Ridge subdivision.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Tabor.
Chris Tabor, Principal Planner. Staff is seeking the council's approval to enter into a developers' agreement with Schuler Ridge LLC, the developer of the Lakes of Schuler Ridge subdivision, to allow the deferral of the construction of a secondary arterial street during the construction of Phase 4 of the subdivision in exchange for partial funding of the deferred items. The agreement would secure funding for specified infrastructure proportional to the percentage of the development being built for 34.76%. The infrastructure being deferred consists of 3,400 feet of what will later be Bailey Avenue, a secondary arterial class road and related sidewalk. The total estimated cost for the deferred infrastructure is $1,647.31.67. The portion of the cost being secured through this agreement, which is again 34.76%, comes to $572,508.20. If approved, the agreement will supersede a previous agreement made for Phase 3 of the Lakes of Schuler Ridge. Staff is recommending approval of this agreement.
Questions from counsel? Seeing none, please remember this is a first read, so if you do have questions, comments, or concerns, please get with staff before the next meeting, which is next week. Item number 14 on our agenda. I would entertain a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 23-28 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries five to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council approving a special use permit for Gator State Storage, FP LLC, to operate a boat, vehicle, and self-storage facility on real property located at 111 and 107 West Broad Street.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening. Patrick Ruiz, Associate Planner. Gator State Storage, FP LLC, has applied for a storage permit, for a special use permit, on 111 107 West Broad Street. The property is two lots, approximately 2.51 acres, and the storage units would be approximately 19,200 square feet. Currently, there is water and sewer services that is access to the site. The approximate location would be determined during the building permit process if approved. The transportation, it will have access off of Broad Street and then an emergency access off of Main Street. The special use permit would be valid unless a change of use were to happen or the configuration of the use changed. Staff recommendation considers the proposed special use permit to be generally consistent with the city's special use permit ordinance and able to be adequately served by the city's transportation network and city's municipal facilities.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions or comments from counsel at this point? Yes, sir.
Is this one of those where, I mean, you're gonna have like boats and stuff just like out through a chain link fence? You know what I mean? That was a dumb way to say all of that. Is this gonna look ugly because there's a bunch of boats and like old stuff sitting out in the open air?
I think the general terminology for boats, it would allow it, but I think it's mostly self-storage is what the proposed development is for.
Okay.
And then if there's any residential lots adjacent, they'll have some screening amongst what the commercial use.
What about driving down Main Street? Are we gonna be able... As we drive down Main Street, is it gonna... What's... What are we doing to make sure it's gonna look good there?
At the moment, I don't think there's any like screening requirements between Main Street and the storage units. But as you can see, the lot to the east, that is not having any storage units, and it could be for future development, so that might screen it from Main Street.
But agreeing to this special permit would allow them to continue building into that lot over there, correct?
Not storage units, no. Just for... The only reason that lot wasn't included was for that emergency access off of Main Street.
Gotcha. So do we know what they're gonna do with that lot?
Not at this time.
Mr. Upset.
Has this come up... This has come up before in front of us, I've been doing this for this location? Maybe not these people, but this location before?
So there had been a permit application submitted in 2017, and then these two lots were rezoned, let's see, in 2018 and 2020. So they were like split zone C1 and C2, and then the western lot was zoned C2, and the eastern lot was zoned C1, and then in 2020, the eastern lot was rezoned to C2 as well. So that's probably where you remember it in the past.
Yes, sir.
So the special use permit, then is there still the process of the public hearing for the property too? Does that not happen and just goes to this process?
Yeah, there was a public hearing for it in P&amp;Z last week.
Okay, and you just didn't have the notes on it, I guess.
The notes on it.
Yeah, I just... Usually on the packet, they have the notes for the... From the meeting, I get...
True.
Yeah.
How did it go at planning and zoning?
It was recommended approval, anonymous by the P&amp;Z members, and nobody spoke against it.
Other questions? Seeing none. Thank you, sir. Please remember, this is a first read, so if you have questions, get with staff before the next meeting. Moving on to item number 15 on our agenda. I would entertain a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 23-29 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries five to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council approving amendment of the zoning classification of approximately 203.39 acres located at 1462 South State Highway MM from Agricultural AG to Garrett Farms Plan Development District, PDD.
Thank you, ma'am. Could you...
Logan. Lee and Mark Garrett have made an application for the rezoning of 203.39 acres of property at 1462 South State Highway MM from Agricultural AG to the Garrett Farm Plan Development District, PDD. This development is designed with an intention of allowing heavy industrial M2 uses of varying sizes and configurations, but also to accommodate the possibility of less intense uses. Requirements for building placement, such as setbacks and maximums for lot coverage and building height, are all in line with the requirements of the city's M2 zoning district. Landscaping requirements for buffering between the subject and adjacent lots will meet or exceed the city's landscaping requirements. The first phase... If we could flip to the next one, if you don't mind, Chris. So the first phase is the portion of this to the west, the smaller of the two outlined properties. That first phase consists of 22 acres, running MM, and includes... In the development, includes all water and necessary infrastructure. Phase 2 is intended to allow for a more organic development process through which the phase could be tailored to larger or smaller uses as desired by the person coming in. So we've got a lot of information on... Basically, the gist of that is we've got a lot of information on what's gonna happen on Phase 1. Phase 2 is left with flexibility in mind so that they can go after, you know, a variety of different use types that might utilize either a large portion of that acreage or smaller as they chopped it up. Access to the development will come off of the continuation of Farm Road 144 eastward from the adjacent intersection, and the road will be a city collector-class street with 70 feet of right-of-way and measure 40 feet from back of curb. The road exists entirely on the applicant's property and will not require right-of-way collection from adjacent property owners. The first phase will see the road built to the eastern boundary of that first phase, and then Phase 2 has plans for an eventual connection to Farm Road 140, to the north there. A water main is being planned along the street that's being built westward to connect to an existing 12-inch on the west side of MM. The development plan for the site requires the construction of a lift station as well to serve the entirety of the property, which is shown on the development plan. A little bit north in that hatched area, if you can read that... If you can read the text on your page, you can see where exactly that lift station is, very near the detention basin. So the lift station would convey effluent through a 10-inch gravity sewer main running along... Running south along the western property line and then following the project's planned street westward across State Highway MM and connecting to an existing sanitary sewer main that's on the west property line of Murphy Tractor. The development plan also contains a designated stormwater detention area to accommodate stormwater generated by the development, and the detention will be constructed as part of the first phase as well. The precise design and placement of the sewer and water infrastructure, the detention area, and related stormwater improvements will be reviewed during project development. The subject does not contain designated special flood hazard area on the 2010 adopted floodplain maps. However, it does have floodplain present on the unadopted 2019 preliminary maps, which we haven't yet received of due full adoption, but we do require review through both of those maps until we've got the 2019 adopted. And the subject parcel does contain several sinkholes as identified by the Green County assessor site. Development of the property will require that the developer respect the city's ordinances relating to sinkholes. It also requires a geological evaluation to do that work. Staff considers this application to be consistent with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive and land use plans with the PDD ordinance, generally consistent with the trend of development in the vicinity of the site, generally compatible with surrounding land uses, and able to be adequately served by municipal facilities. We're recommending approval of this application. We're recommending approval of this application.
Thank you, sir. Questions for Mr. Tabor?
Yes, sir. This may be early, I know, early in the process, but that lift station, that serves off of that area, but would that be able to service additional areas?
So, they'll size that lift station, you know, as they design appropriately to do that. There is an opportunity for property owners, there's always an opportunity for adjacent development to kind of couple together and come together at that time to upsize those lift stations in order to serve those properties. And we do have, you know, we have had interest, we've had interest in this meeting where we rezoned, people who are interested along that area of rezoning.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Cameron.
I know Jared's here with Olson Engineering that's representing Lee and Mark, and Lee and Mark, it's great to see you. I do want to provide some, some detail. This council has provided us some level of authority. This is a project that we've been working on for, for several months. We met with the Garrett Brothers, my gosh, would that start two years ago? And so, we began just to discuss with the widening of MM, obviously looking for, with the Garten Industrial Park being completely filled now after the Amazon campus, and then the last building was recently completed, looking for where we would be building the next industrial park for the community, and with the interest that we're seeing from the development community that is similar to, say, the Amazon project, looking for those sites. And so, working with the Garrett Brothers, they had a lot of interest and folks approaching, looking to buy their property, and we wanted to partner and participate like we did with the Garten Industrial Park. So, all the infrastructure, widening of MM, that's also, we're talking about, we have a lot of investment as a community, the state does as well on MM Highway, and so prior to them just selling it outright, we've worked with them on how to potentially parcel that. So, I appreciate their work. I just want to add clarity, when it comes to the infrastructure and the site development, you will be seeing, similar to like what you saw on the Garten Industrial Park, there will be a development agreement that will come before this council where we will partner with them on potential infrastructure that will lead to additional job growth in that particular campus. And so, that we believe is the future site. It has also been designated by the state of Missouri as a premier site, one of five, and I think a five-state area with, with property adjacent to rail. And I believe with their property combined, it adds up to almost over a 400-acre parcel. And there has, as Mr. Tabor has expressed, there has been significant interest in, obviously in Republic, obviously in I-44 adjacent to the airport, and with the widening of MM, this is not just any PDD, this is probably the next phase of where Republic goes long-term future from economic development, from job growth and creation, not just for Republic, but for the entire southwest Missouri region. And thank you at that. I just wanted to add that because when you're asking about infrastructure or lift station, we're very much involved in the overall planning of that layout to make sure that it's sized appropriately. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Jared, do you want to come up and speak, or did David take all your, David does it to me all the time. He took all your material.
I'd be happy to answer any specific infrastructure questions you may have. You'll probably notice the road itself that's there on the western half that's just south of the property there to the north. We're showing it in the middle of like what's called an easement, and then there's also a, I think there's about a 65-foot strip in there that we're providing additional right-of-way for. Large, large ads due because of the city utilities that comes through there. We can't build, they don't want us to build in the middle of it, so we're trying to build on the edge of it, so we leave this weird spike strip. So, we're purposefully dedicating that additional right-of-way so the properties of the north can make connection.
Any other questions? Appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any general comments or discussion from council on this issue? Seeing none, please remember, this is a first read. Get with staff before the next meeting with questions. Item number 16, my attorney tells me that we are tabling, and I can just announce it, we don't need a vote. Excellent. So, we are tabling that. We will take up item number 16 on September 19th, 2023, and we will move on to item number 17 on our agenda. This is 23-31. I would entertain a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 23-31 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
Laura, you good?
Yes.
All right, perfect. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries five to zero. Madam Clark.
An ordinance of the city council approving budget amendment number one to the budget for the fiscal year 2023.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening. Bob Ford, Finance Director. Staff is seeking approval this evening for the first budget amendment for fiscal 2023. Just to walk you through how we did this budget amendment, we fundamentally looked at those major items that in fact were changing in this budget amendment. We didn't address every specific nit and net throughout the, throughout the budget. So, in a nutshell, this budget amendment reflects revenues are up $12.1 million. Before you say hurrah, understand that the accounting for the Parks and Rec bonds proceeds, $9.9 million flows to the revenue side of the cash flow statement. Offsetting that, expenditures are up $8.3 million, 6.1 million of that are expenditures related to the park and rec pool expansion, which the bond proceeds will use to fund. So, if you account and adjust for the Parks and Rec bond proceed impacts to revenues and expenditures, the consolidated city net contribution is effectively flat over what we showed to you back when the budget was approved. So, the next chart basically walks you through the changes in revenue and the changes in expenses that drove this budget amendment. And I'll just highlight a couple of things. So, if we start on the left-hand side, look at the changes in revenue. At the top, the, the largest change in revenue obviously is the bond proceeds for the Parks and Rec Bond, 9.9 million. We've talked about interest revenue in prior meetings, recognizing that when we budgeted interest income based on our cash forecast for this year, we get budgeted 70 basis points. As you know, in January, that changed to 275 basis points, and once again, that ratcheted up on August 1st to 325 basis points. So, we've extrapolated that information across our forecast for our cash pool for the remaining part of the year, and we're seeing an interest revenue improvement of $1.4 million. We've talked a little, little bit about in prior meetings that we've seen city sales taxes off a bit compared to budget, which is the bottom section of, of the change in revenues. If you look at that, it's about $400,000 of, of negative variance to budget. What we, what we saw the first six months was basically negative variance to budget, but we're seeing in the last two months, we're getting back on budget. So, what we've done is we've left actuals just as they came in for the first six months and for the first two months of the second half of the year, and we've just assumed budget for the rest of the year. So, that would, if, if that plays out the way we expect, that'll put us about $400,000 under budget. But to offset that, if you look at other state taxes and, and both from state motor fuel taxes, property taxes, vehicle sales taxes, Green County law enforcement, all the other taxes are up compared to budget, about $500,000 in the aggregate. So, that's basically an offset to the change, the negative variance we've seen on the, on the city sales tax side. The other side of the equation here is the change in expenses and expenditures. The biggest savings we've seen, i.e., it's a negative expense, is the personnel savings we've seen primarily across the city, but predominantly in the fire and police departments and the jobs that we haven't filled during the year. We've got a savings on the Heinz and Lynn project, and then we've got a number of items here that were not budgeted. For instance, I came to you a couple of meetings ago about the question of budget software. It's here as, as a negative variance because it was not budgeted for. But net-net, you can see in total, change in revenues, $12 million, change in expenses, $8.3 million. In the bottom, this little bottom box basically takes that information, starts with budget, adds the changes in revenue and the changes in expenses to show that the budget amendment would, would reflect $4.6 million from a net contribution perspective. But adjusting for the parks' bonds so that we can really compare apples and to apples' budget to where we are today, if you back out the revenue on the parks' bond side and back out the change in capital, capex, we in fact get to about $806,000 in terms of a net position for the city on a consolidated basis compared to 816 that we showed in the budget. So, net-net, we're about in the same position. We got there in a lot of different ways, but we're in about the same position. The next page, what I've done is try to take the original budget, which at the bottom you see nets to $816,000, and then show the changes in the middle column, and then what the budget amendment results in terms of a net position, a consolidated surplus of 4.6 million bucks. But I've divided this into both capital and operating, which is something we haven't done historically, but the important here, the important thing, I think, is to start addressing the fact that our budgeting process historically has captured both operating expense and operating revenue and sources of, of cash that would fund capex and capex all in one master budget. We're gonna start separating that so that we see capital and how we're gonna fund capital and operating from a revenue perspective and operating expenses. So, this budget amendment, if you look in the last two columns, we look at the adjustment by taking the parks' bonds out so we can compare apples to apples. We see that the, the surplus or deficit, the impact in the last column on the capital budget is a negative $3.1 million compared to the budget, which was a negative $1.4 million. So, we've seen a, a negative variance in our capital budget by about 1.7 million bucks. And what that is saying is we've got capital projects that one, either we didn't budget for, or we in fact have pulled up into this year, or they were gonna happen in '22 and they got drug out into '23. So, we've seen a capital, a capital change in our capital, or a change in our capital budget to the tune a negative variance of 1.7 million bucks. Normally, we would fund that at a cash off our balance sheet, but because the operating, operating budget is up about the same amount, we chose to show that we'll use the operating surplus. Remember, we've got revenue coming from interest income, we've got savings on personnel, we've got a number of items that are driving our operating budget in, in a positive variance, and that operating budget is up by about the same amount, about 1.7 million bucks. So, the good news is from an operating perspective, the city from this budget perspective looks better than we showed you back last year when we approved the budget. On a capital perspective, we're gonna use the surplus of the operating results to fund that incremental capital requirement. Staff is recommending approval of this. I've got questions.
Anybody else? I don't want to jump in. Mr. Ford, I really enjoy the way you present these things because it's incredibly factual, and you just stated the way it is. What I want to know is opinion, so do the best you can with that, okay? What in this worries you? I know that we're looking better than we, than the original budget, but what on here should we be looking at as indicators of potential trouble that we should be tracking?
I guess I would say I'm not as worried about this budget and the changes to this budget. We're, we're close enough to the end of the year. If you'd asked me three months ago, I would've said tax revenue, city tax revenue. I'm less concerned about that today.
Why?
On the capital side, we've got enough cash flow, and we've got cash on the balance sheet, that if we chose not to fund it with the surplus of the operating budget, we could. We've got cash to do that. So, that doesn't worry me. Ultimately, I think what we're, David and I have had this discussion, what worries me long-term is that we've got a large wastewater project sitting out there that is not totally funded yet. And so, our cash that's sitting on our balance sheet is precious, and I want to hang on to it.
Okay. So, we need to be paying attention to our cash?
Absolutely.
Okay. What else do we need to be doing? Besides passing your budget amendment?
I think we're, I think we're doing all of the right things, and we're watching our expenditures, we're watching our spending, we're making sure that on the capital side. I, I think one of the things that we're going to do is that we've got a number of restricted cash accounts that, the money has just been sitting on the balance sheet for years. It's time to start looking at what were those funds intended for, and let's put them to work for the city.
Right. Okay. Other questions from council? Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Please get with staff before the next meeting so that we can pass this, or not. Hopefully. I'm just gonna quit talking now. All right, so, moving on to item number 18 on our agenda. This is 23-32. I would entertain a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 23-32 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries five to zero. Madam Clark.
An ordinance of the city council setting the 2023 property tax levies for the City Republic of Missouri.
Thank you, ma'am. Keep going.
Good evening. Bob Ford, Bill Finance Director. Staff is seeking approval for the changes in tax levies for fiscal year '23 where the cash flow would, cash flow in '24. The City Republic assesses taxes on real property but not on personal property, as you know, and we have three property tax levies. General operating that funds the general fund, Parks and Recreation, which funds obviously the Parks Fund, and Streetlights, which funds streets. The city, as per statute, may revise its levy to allow for the inflationary assessment growth occurring in the city. However, the inflationary growth rate is limited to the assessed growth in the city exclusive or less the new construction and improvements. Now, to be clear, the, we're gonna back out new construction and improvements only for calculating the rate. Once the rate is calculated, then we can apply that rate to all assessed value, including new construction. The growth rate is, the permitted growth rate is the smaller of the percentage increase in the year-over-year assessed value, which we'll go through in a second, the Consumer Price Index, which we receive from the state, or 5%. So, in a high inflationary environment, the real effective cap is gonna be 5%. If, if, if we flip over, I thought I would just give you a little tutorial on how we calculate a levy.
Thank you.
Yeah. It's moving stuff. And we'll only do, we'll only do one levy and just assume that we did the same process for the other two. But the, the first thing is, we need to calculate the rate. So, the first thing to do is calculate the adjusted assessed value for the current year. Now, why are we doing that? So, what the statute says is that there's a pool of properties that have, have an assessed value, and those properties that existed last year are the properties that we're gonna look at this year to build our rate change from. So, effectively, what we're gonna do here is we're gonna look at the assessed valuation that we receive from the county. Both Christian and Green County provides the information. So, that number is 326,000, 173,000, 326,000, 173,312. From that, we're gonna back out the new construction, and we're gonna back out newly-acquired territory to get to an adjusted assessed value for this year, which is 295 million. That number's important because we're gonna compare that number, which is reflective of those properties that were in the basket last year, the same properties in the basket last year as this year, and we're gonna compare the value last year to this year. So, last year's assessed value was 277 million. This year's adjusted value for the same properties is 295 million. So, that's an increase in assessed valuation of $17 million or 6.4395%. So, there's one data point. The next thing that we have to do is we need to calculate the maximum revenue allowed on the assessed value for last year's basket of, of properties, because that's our base. So, we had 277, 77 million dollars of assessed value last year, and we're gonna use last year's tax levy, which was, is .004326, which is 43, .4326 per 100. So, the maximum allowed revenue on the basket of properties from last year using last year's using last year's rate, is one, is one million, two hundred and one thousand, oh fifty-one. At this point, we've got enough data to say, okay, we know what the percent growth is in the assessed value year-over-year. That's our six point four three nine five. We know what the Consumer Price Index is given to us by the state, six and a half. And we have a cap of five. Take the smaller number. Five percent is going to be the allowable growth in the base of last year's revenue. So if we take last year's revenue, based on last year's assessed value times last year's tax rate, that's what was allowed. And we take five percent against that, that's our allowable growth rate. That's sixty thousand, oh fifty-three. So the total revenue permitted in this current year on that basket of properties is one million, two sixty-one, one oh four. So now we have, we have, we're going to solve for what the rate is. We know what, we know what the revenue that we can earn this year. And we know what the adjusted assessed value is on those properties. So we're going to take two hundred and ninety-five million dollars and we're going to divide, we're going to divide that into the one million, two sixty-one, one oh four. That's going to give us our new tax levy for this year to be applied against properties this year. So the new, the new levy is point forty-two sixty-seven, or point zero zero, per one hundred, or point zero zero four twenty, forty-two sixty-seven. Now, this is where we get to bring in everything. So we get to go back to our total assessed value, which is not only the basket of properties we had last year, but the new construction. And that number is three hundred and twenty-six million, one seventy-three from the prior page. We're going to apply our new tax levy rate against that. And so the expected revenue for this year's tax levy, which will cash flow next year for the general operating tax levy, is one million, three ninety-one, seven eighty-two. Now, here's kind of a summary of what I just told you. So in twenty-twenty-two, those are the tax levies.
No, no. He's doing good. I'm following. I'm learning.
So in twenty-twenty-two.
That was going to be my next question.
Here's our tax levies. So we take our tax levies times our assessed value to get to our revenue, both operating, parks and rec, and streetlights. We do the same thing for this year. We have, we just calculated what our new tax levy is, point four two six seven per one hundred. We're going to take that times our total assessed value for this year, three hundred and twenty-six million. So now we have our new expected tax revenue for this year that'll cash flow in twenty-four. So we're going to see our, our tax revenue on the property tax side grow about two hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars.
Show of hands, who knew how to do this before this presentation? Does anybody know how to?
Except Mr. Partially.
Did you already do this?
Yeah. Excellent presentation. Excellent.
Wow.
The formulas and everything. Very much enjoyed that.
Does anyone have any questions?
The staff recommends. I recommend approval. Yes. That was fantastic, Bob.
Questions? All right. Seeing none, please get with staff if you can come up with a question.
Yeah.
Call Bob. All right. Moving on to item number nineteen. Chris, can you follow that?
I think there ought to be a quiz next week.
All right.
I'm calling in soon.
I would entertain a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill twenty-three dash thirty-three by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries five to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council approving the final plat of Wilson's Valley Plan Development District, Phase One.
Thank you, ma'am. Where's your PowerPoint?
I don't know that I can do better than Bob, but I can speak quickly and just have two items. The Builds Department's requesting approval of a final plat for Wilson's Valley, Phase One. The final plat would legally divide approximately twenty-eight acres into sixty-seven residential lots and three commercial lots, for a total of seventy lots. It also includes the dedication of streets and associated sidewalks and utility stormwater and detention easements. This final plat conforms to the development plan for Wilson's Valley Plan Development District, which was approved on May third, twenty-twenty-two. The Builds Department has reviewed and is recommending approval of the final plat.
You were, really were going to talk fast, weren't you? Jedi my control over there. Questions from council? Seeing none. Please remember this is a first read. Get with staff before the next meeting. Moving on to items, item number twenty on our agenda. This is twenty-three dash thirty-four. We entertain a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill twenty-three dash thirty-four by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries five to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council approving execution of a developer agreement with Wilson's Valley LLC for the deferment of certain infrastructure obligations in exchange for the developer's dedication of right-of-way to the city.
Thank you, ma'am. Go ahead, Chris.
So we've got a staff seeking council's approval for a developer's agreement with Wilson's Valley LLC. I apologize in advance. This map is not up to our GIS snuff. This is what you get, though, when Josh doesn't get time to do the maps and I have to do them. So what they're looking to do is they're looking to move into development for the infrastructure of Phase Two, which is, Phase One is the part to the, the most western piece on the left. That's the piece that we just talked about for the final plat. Phase Two is the piece next to that. So that includes roughly ninety lots. We don't know exactly because they haven't done infrastructure design. And what they're looking to do is defer the construction of that portion of the road in purple that is going through that second phase. So in exchange for deferring that, what we will get is a hundred and ten feet of right-of-way for the entirety of that primary arterial road. When that project goes to Phase Three and gets developed, that primary arterial gets built.
Is that going to interfere with construction? Or is it going to cause us any heartache down the road?
It's, it's the, it's probably our preference on the way to do that. That street should be built at once. You know, we don't necessarily want it being built in, especially where it's located in that second phase. None of those parcels have access to that. It doesn't serve that second phase. It's best to probably do it in the third phase.
Questions from council? Seeing none. Please get with staff before the next meeting. Thank you, sir. Moving on to other business, specifically resolutions. Item number twenty-one on our agenda. This is twenty-three dash R dash forty-nine, a resolution of the City Council authorizing the city administrator to execute a First Amendment with Burns and McDonald for the wastewater treatment facility expansion project. I need a motion and a second to take up Resolution twenty-three dash R dash forty-nine, please.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Mr. Rickner.
Thank you. Garrett Rickner, Assistant Builds Administrator. So what this resolution will do is, as part of the Phase One contract with Burns and McDonald for expansion of the wastewater treatment plant, they have started the engineering work. The original cost for that engineering work was at seven million, three hundred and eighty, three hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, eight hundred. What this would do is essentially move up a piece of that work into that Phase One contract from the Phase Two construction contract. So they're asking for this to be done so that they can make more accurate, more accurate design versus once they actually get into construction, having to do that excavation at that time. So this is something that would have been brought as just part of the Phase Two contract. When we bring that forward to council, they're just asking to move that up to, to do better in their design work as they move forward with the project. Have you happened to answer any questions on that one?
Is that a reasonable thing for them to want to do in this particular project?
I think so. When you're talking about spending this much money on something, I think spending the money upfront to know what you're designing is better than kind of going into it as an assumption is made on where the bedrock is versus knowing exactly where it is, knowing exactly how deep the foundations for this type of structures need to be.
Yes, sir.
They're working on a big project and how they've been to work with so far?
They've been excellent. They've done a lot of work with the city before. They've started working on our CIP projects. They're really good to work with.
Thanks. Any other questions about this resolution? Seeing none. As this is a resolution, we can call it immediately for a vote, which is what I will do. All those in favor of twenty-three dash R dash forty-nine, please vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution carries five to zero. Item number twenty-two on our agenda is going to be tabled and rescheduled for August twenty-ninth. That's correct. Very good. Moving on to item number twenty-three. This is twenty-three dash R dash fifty-one, a resolution of the City Council authorizing supplemental agreement number two for the Shuler Creek Trail Project with Olson Engineering for additional engineering services in the amount of seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and seventy-seven cents. I need a motion and a second to take up Resolution twenty-three dash R dash fifty-one.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. You thought you were done, but you aren't.
I thought I had one in between me, but it's all good. So what this is, the second supplemental agreement to the engineering services contract with Olson and Associates. This is for additional engineering services related to some right-of-way changes, some development changes with the Shuler Creek Trail as we've worked through our, our public meetings and our negotiations with the property owners. So what, what the seventy-three thousand represents is the additional engineering work that Olson has done in order to try and accommodate as well as we can those folks out there.
Questions from council?
Yes, sir.
And so this is for work that, that's already been done and we're reimbursing, basically. This isn't for future work. This is for work that's already been accomplished.
Yes, they have already done that. And basically, the question is, okay, what happens when you don't prove it? What I would say is we would probably look at cutting scope elsewhere in the contract at that point, make them whole. They have already done this work, so.
So that's paying our bill.
Essentially, yes.
Yes. For lack of a better word, what, what pot is this coming out of to pay from? What fund?
Sure. So this is partially funded from the Capital Improvement Sales Tax Fund. We also have a grant. We've actually been given additional grant money from the Ozarks Transportation Organization for this project that'll bring it more in line to an eighty-twenty split. So just like everything else for this project, this should be split. Eighty percent we're paying, or excuse me, eighty percent we're getting reimbursed, twenty percent will be out of the CIS.
So we would pay the upfront of the CIS fund and then ask for reimbursement as long as we.
Yep, exactly.
Yep. Thanks. Other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So I just want to be clear what this work was for. So whenever we had the public hearings and we, we asked for citizen participation, this is the cost based upon those comments that we spent to relocate the line away from other parcels on that discussion. So one of the discussions was, would we consider moving the line or moving the trail? And that was what the cost was to realign it to avoid as many properties as possible. Okay. I just want to clarify what that's for.
Yes. The biggest thing was shifting from the at-grade crossing at Farm Road ninety-nine to the now we have a grade-separated crossing going on a little bit further up the road.
What is a grade-separating crossing?
Grade-separated cross, so at-grade crossing is your typical crosswalk on a street, just the white painted lines, cross at your own risk. A grade-separated crossing in this instance would be an underpass that will actually go under the road. So pedestrians and traffic, or vehicle traffic, are not crossing at the same grade, essentially.
You just wanted to show off all those fancy letters behind his name, didn't you?
I just want to know what that grade cross, I don't know what an at-grade crossing is, but I don't know if that's like a bridge that goes over it or.
Yeah. So grade-separated could also be a pedestrian bridge, but it doesn't function in situations.
Other questions? Seeing none. And as this is a resolution, we can call it immediately for a vote, which is what I will do. All those in favor of twenty-three dash R dash fifty-one, please vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution carries by a vote of five to zero. Moving on to reports from staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I predicted an hour and ten minutes, so I'm feeling pretty good about this. Bob, I thought you did a fantastic job again to all the staff that presented. We joke about it, but what a gift. Thank you for being here and being a part of our team. That's some of the most detailed information, the financial position. I thought the mayor asked a lot of great questions. And Bob's correct. I think he's talked to me about this wastewater plant more than I've talked about it. I don't think that's possible, but he's, he's, he's always forecasting and looking ahead, and I appreciate the work. But again, to all the staff that prepared, that's waited to prepare a twenty-three, what is it, three-page agenda? It's quite a bit. I want to thank this staff and the council and the mayor and the citizens that are, that are here tonight. I mean, we had to cancel last week because we did not have a quorum, as you can see. Councilmember Self, in this, in between our last meeting, resigned because out of integrity, he moved out of his ward. Therefore, he can no longer serve. And as soon as he moved out of his ward, it was no longer effective. So as of, I think it was last week, we began to advertise for, we have three vacant positions. So the mayor and I will be meeting, we have two, I'm sorry.
Two.
So we have, and then, yes, and then Mrs. Pulley is ill. So we are down to, we are down short. So I apologize for any of the delays for those that are here to talk about item sixteen tonight in fairness to the applicant and to the property owners in that area. To have a quorum or at least have people to discuss it was what our intentions are for. It's not to delay it or extend it out for any purpose. It's basically, we need to get people to consider it and give it a fair vote, up or down. So we will have, I think next Thursday, Wednesday, the mayor and I will be conducting interviews for those vacant positions. And so hopefully, it will not be for the next meeting, but hopefully, we'll have a quorum or we'll have a full, much fuller city council by the September nineteenth meeting, if that's correct. But just want to bring everybody up to speed with that. With that, the school queuing lane. Josh, did we, did we do any drone footage of that area?
Yeah, we did yesterday morning and afternoon.
So. So the reports that we have gotten so far is that that is working well. But the, I think the, some of the comments that have already been received is that Main and One Seventy-four was busy before school was going on. And so this, the queuing lane did not necessarily fix busy times at those intersections with traffic. So that'll be an ongoing discussion. But at least we don't have cars stacked up four ways, going around, cutting through the Casey's parking lot or just cutting through the grass or passing you on the, on the left, all the way down. What was that, P going, or N going out to, to I forty-four? So I want to thank the city employees, staff that built that, but also the partnership between ourselves and the school district to pull that together. Because that has been, in my seven-year tenure with the city, that's been one of the largest topics that continuously gets brought up. A roundabout will not fix it. Stoplights will not fix it because you're still going to be stacked up there. So for the school to go out and seek the property, the, the brothers that own the property that were willing to work with the city, because that is a mini-storage site, it was an ideal spot for that location, and them willing to actually donate the right-of-way. So the property owners, the school and to the staff, I just want to commend for fixing a community. I mean, I think the roundabout at Heinz, a community need, but the roundabout at Heinz and Lynn was a, was a big win, but I think this one is probably bigger than that one, some would probably argue. But if you haven't gone through that intersection at 7:30, 8 o'clock, you will not know what I'm talking about, so. To the historic district folks for coming in tonight, I appreciate your presentation. And what I will do is, we will look at that whole idea, so the whole idea with the six months, yes, the council gave us a resolution a year ago. We obviously haven't moved on that because, one, we needed to vacate the property. But there's three questions that I have to have answered by legal counsel before. One is can we donate property because it's publicly owned, the citizens own it? So we, this body don't own it, the citizens do. So giving away public property, I'll have to find out how to donate, if we can donate. The second question that I promised you that we will look into in that six-month period, because we're not, we don't have bulldozers lined up and ready to take it down. We, if we could still have utilized the property, we'd be utilizing the property. There is mold remediation that's required in that building. What I want to know is, can we issue a waiver that we have zero liability from anyone that enters that building? And two, can we allow anyone to occupy that building when it does not meet city code? So in that Miller Engineering report, why we have to vacate it in any way is because it didn't even meet our own city code. So allowing someone to occupy it, they will need to meet the requirements of tho, of that report to bring it up to code, to reoccupy it. Otherwise, I'll need to know from the legal counsel, can we actually legally, would that liability, give it to someone else, and will that be waived to us? And is there any laws, tort law, anything that protects us from being liable for any, any things with it? But I assure you that I will do is exhaust every effort to make sure, but for the city, for us, to spend a million dollars, we asked the taxpayers in 19 for a sales tax that would address either City Hall in that capacity, I'm not blaming the voters, what I'm suggesting, we tried to find a way to remedy what the deficiencies were in that building that have been taking place for a long time. But I did not want you leaving this room tonight without knowing we did not try in that season. We just could not come, we didn't have a million dollars sitting around to go and renovate that building, and we had to expand it. But I did not want you leaving here tonight with just nothing, other than the assurance that I will look at. For six months, we've been waiting a year. So we're not just running around waiting just to do something. If there was a way that it could be occupied and utilized and donated, and we don't have any liability as, as the community to the citizens for anyone's health and safety if those needs aren't met, I'll make sure that we've exhausted all those efforts. And we will provide contact, it may not be in three weeks, but I mean, give us some time, and we'll give our legal counsel some time to do that. The Lobber Law Firm will probably seek some outside counsel on this because there are some case law I'm sure we'll have to look into, but I didn't want you leaving tonight without some sort of comment from me. And you can call me anytime, Bill, you can always just walk across the road and pound on my door. So well number three, is there any update on well number three?
They've got about 160 feet of pipe pulled out. The pump itself is about 500 feet in the ground. They're going to continue working through the night to get that pulled and assess the situation, and hopefully have an update in the morning.
Can you hear that, Chris, through the microphone?
I'd say it is in the microphone.
Would you go ahead and say it through the microphone for me? My mom's listening.
So they have about 160 feet of the pipe pulled right now. The pump itself is about 500 feet in the ground, so they're going to continue working throughout the night to get that pump pulled, assess what needs to happen, and work on getting a replacement or whatever needs to happen to get it fixed and back in service as soon as possible.
I have follow-up questions.
Okay, can I ask one question? Are we having any water pressure reserve problems now?
No, it's, it's more of a capacity thing than anything. The water quality is absolutely fine, our pressures are fine. It's just with that well out of the service and this time of year, just not a great situation. But the system is redundant enough to handle it.
You sure?
I'm good.
All right. When did all this go out?
This morning.
What time do you know?
I got the first text probably around 7:30.
Right, and how fast did we find a replacement pump?
Probably, at least within two hours.
So you found a replacement pump within two hours?
Mm-hmm.
And we're working on it non-stop?
Yes, they will work through the night on getting it back into service as fast as possible.
How many people do we have out there working on it?
So it's actually a contractor, it's Flynn, it's the same contracting group that did the replacement at well six earlier this year. And then Eric Brown, our operations director, will be out there with them.
Well, thank you for jumping on that and taking care of that for the citizens.
Yep.
Yeah, I agree, Mr. Mayor, I think, I think sometimes it gets lost. The mayor was involved in the email thread today, and just the communications and how quickly to see the staff work and respond. And that's just what I love, there's so many things that we do appear that it's hard to see in the general public's eye, but what people are out there doing and what they'll be doing all night to get that done. But the other thing that, the mayor asked a great question today, is like, help me understand what it means. When we take a water tower down to paint it, we have adequate water supply to do that. So there's times where there's a water tower that's been out of service, when they're painting it, taking care of it, many times, and you may not even know it. The difference is, in this situation, it's over 100 degrees outside, people are still watering their grass, and so we weren't planning to take a water tower down anytime soon. But that does remind me, in October, for the council's awareness, it's not in my notes, in October, we will be painting the final tower that's there on Heinz Street as it is desperately needed it for quite some time. But yes, to your point, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I want to, in your all's packet, I read through this admin report, I want to thank the staff, we've got quite a bit of information there. But as a citizenry, I would encourage you to read, go onto our webpage and read this admin report. It's not really there just to say, look at all the things we're doing. There's a lot of detailed information there from what the governor is doing, what the legislature did, what affects you, not just at, at the local level, but the state level. There's a lot of updates, some of it I agree with, some of it I don't agree with. But I think it's important that as you as a citizen can go on there and look and see what's taking place. I mean, interesting to hear about flock, flock cameras, is that what I saw, flock cameras? So it gives our officers an idea if there's someone that's wanted or, or needed, but I don't know why they call them flock, but I guess they're like birds. But there's just a lot of great information in there, into this thing, the Aquatic Center. If you've not driven by the Aquatic Center, it's like, I don't know how the staff at the Parks Department, because it's not in my backyard, but it's like, but I don't, I think how the staff at the Parks Department, how they are working on, how you go to work every day and look at that thing. I think it's kind of crazy that you don't get a little bit giddy. But I want, but I, but I want to tell you that, like, there's stuff, I met with Jared, was it last week or week this week? And there's just things that I was not preparing for. The one in Liberty, there's one, I think there's one in Kansas City, very similar in nature, that went through the same thing. It was so busy the first week that they had to turn away residents, and they were making it residence-only and different things. Is that my three minutes are up?
Yes, exactly. Sorry, Mom.
I'm sorry, it's been a long time. But I just want to, I want to tell you that your, your staff, that park staff, just like the public work staff, have been preparing for an opening date in May, and have started months in advance of how they're going to do the logistics from parking, from seating to all that. And I just want, I mean, I don't think, I don't think that gets recognized enough. And Jared, I appreciate the work that you all do to make these events look so seamless. And it's just, it's incredible work. The Aquatic Center, and then IT, on the last page, this is something that, in the world we live in today, you know, Chris, I told you what a great job you've done since you've been here. We've got great, great staff, but the one thing that we deal with as a community is the cyber threat. I don't know how well it was reported, even noted, but we was attacked for $975,000 in, in October of last year. And for 24 hours, they were able to hack it, take $975,000, and we was able to recover it with the help of the FBI, our city attorney, our police department. But just through one email address, through one little click, someone can attack your system and you have no idea, and you think it, it came from the mayor, it came from me. And I'm not talking about just some, someone just missed it, this was a very civilized attack. And so Chris was able to do, as, as we've been consistently doing, is working on our education and training. But the scores of the work that we're doing to be better as an organization through just your cell phone use, your email use, but how to protect the community's money. Again, little fundamentals that we're doing very, very well, you can see our scores. They don't show up on a spreadsheet, don't show up as Mr., I'm sorry, what's your? Chris, your last name? Brown, what does not show up on an Excel spreadsheet, I love that comment tonight. We will continue to listen to the things that, that you have presented to us. We have the tape and the audio of this, so we'll go back and listen to the requests that you've made. I promise that I'll be taken care of, but there are things, as you stated, that do not reflect on a spreadsheet or Excel spreadsheet, I think that's a great comment and a great quote. But with the, with that, there's one last thing I have to do. This happened to me two years ago, that our mayor, if you have not noticed, the Springfield Business Journal is listed as one of the Men of the Year. He did the same thing to me, but I, I don't think people understand how much the mayor works behind the scenes, how much he keeps from us, coming to us. I know he says that he's leaving, he's not running again, but he runs, him and his wife both run a successful, successful businesses in addition to that. He also serves on the Harmony House with his volunteer time, raising two kids. And I just, I, I think that there's no one more deserving, from someone that serves to what, 400 bucks a month? To the time that it takes, to the, to the emails and the messages he gets. But I do want to honor you, I mean, this is a great accomplishment. I know you don't, you don't like it as much as I don't like it, but you did the same thing to me a couple years ago.
I did, I did, turned about to spare play.
So I just want to congratulate you on being listed as one of the Men of the Year for the Springfield Business Journal.
Thank you.
And with that, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Reports from council? Yes, sir. Man of the year. Ah, there are 20 of us. That's awesome. You're still one of them. I am one of them. First of all, thank you to all the citizens that came out tonight, Mr. Brown, Ms. Mooneyham. Thank you for bringing that conversation to council, very much appreciate that. It's one of my favorite portions of city council meetings, hearing from the citizens, so very thankful for that. I'd also like to thank the Planning and Zoning Commission. I've noticed a difference in the Planning and Zoning Commission the last few meetings. And Ms. Haynes, Mr. Brickner, Mr. Taver, you've done an excellent job. And even while I'm watching that, your level of professionalism is outstanding. And so I really appreciate seeing that as I'm there and seeing that on the YouTube, not as I'm there, but as on YouTube, and having that to bring here to make our decisions. I really appreciate that, so thank you. A reminder that the Ward Three and Four deadline is this Friday for anyone that wants to put in the application, so please, anyone that's interested. The only other thing I would like to say is, on behalf of the citizens, thank you for extending the yard waste hours for the recovery during the storm. That really makes a lot of difference for a lot of us that work six, seven days a week. Some of us, that the heat has been unbearable for a lot of people. And so having that extended time to take care of the limbs and branches or whatever fell in our yard is, is very much appreciated, so thank you very much. And on this side, any updates from council? Well, seeing none, I'm going to end with, look, I absolutely love that you brought this in because there is a problem, and you brought a potential solution to the table. And you, you weren't, you were looking at me, but you didn't see what I just saw, which is almost every single city employee nod their head when, because we, we hear a lot of, we're doing it wrong. And I teased you about that last time we talked. But what you did was you turned it on me, and you brought something as a potential solution. I don't know if it's going to work, but you know something, I respect the fact that we're trying, and I'm going to help you try, okay? Last thing I'm going to end with is a little bit heavy, but it's been on my heart and I wanted to do it. And we don't have Ms. Mitchell here anymore to, to lead with her heart, so I'm going to try to fill her shoes. My oldest son, Alex, plays travel basketball, and he plays for Yanders Law, which is a very prestigious, I'm very proud of him, a very prestigious organization in Nixon, Missouri. Ran by a gentleman, up until two days ago, was ran by a gentleman by the name of Rob Yanders. 44-year-old, former star basketball player at MSU, played overseas, amazing coach, made a difference in my boy's life. Hard man, but good man, you know? He, he pushed everybody, and that's good, I like that, that, that's, that's what people need, I think. And Alex and I were at practice on Sunday, Alex practiced, I watched, and Rob was there, and he was laughing, and he was joking, and he was coaching the kids, and he was, he was just like I had seen him every day for, every time I was there for the last two years. That night, Sunday night, he went home and had a massive heart attack at the age of 44, in the best shape he's ever had, ever was in his life, and died, leaving behind a wife and two small kids and thousands of athletes that he has coached. And you've probably seen it in the media, you've probably seen it on Facebook. But I'm, I'm giving you a private testimonial that, a public testimonial, that he made a difference in my boy's life, and he's going to be missed. The reason I'm saying all this is, we don't know when our last moment is. So go home and hug your people, you know? It matters, it matters what we do here, but it's the people at home that really matter, you know? So go give them a hug, because I didn't think that'd be the last time I saw Rob Yanders. So I hate to end on a downer, but it's been on my heart and I think it's worth saying. So with that, I'm going to close city council. We do have executive session tonight. No further action other than announcing adjournment by the mayor shall take place after an executive session that is scheduled as last matter on the agenda, unless otherwise stated, on the agenda or is allowed per RSMO 610.02. Tonight, we will be covering number one, RSMO 610.02.1.1, pending and/or potential litigation, closed session, closed vote, closed record. Item number two, RSMO 610.02.1.2, real estate acquisition, closed session, closed vote, closed record. Item number three, RSMO 610.02.1.3, hiring, firing, promotion, or disciplining personnel, closed session, closed vote, closed record. And finally, number four, RSMO 610.02.1.1.3, individually identifiable personal personnel records, performance ratings, and records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment, closed session, closed vote, closed record. Did I get everything?
Got it all.
Perfect. I would entertain a motion and a second for adjournment into closed session.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, roll call, vote.
Councilmember Updike?
Aye.
Councilmember Gerke?
Aye.